The Chair calls the meeting to order of the Committee of the Whole Tuesday, June 27, 2023. You all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Noceriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the Tuesday, June 13, 2023 Committee Meeting Minutes. Is there a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. There are no presentations tonight, so the next item on the agenda or the ordinances tabled are remaining in committee. Ordinances number 2022-384, 2023-86, 2023-173, 2023-202 are tabled or remaining in committee. Does any councilperson wish to make a motion on any of those? Okay, hearing none. Ordinances for committee considerations. C D B L P, Mr. Clerk.
2023-279, an ordinance authorizing a four-year extension under an existing agreement with Continental Cement Company, LLC pertaining to synthetic Gibson purchases for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion for the consent by Alderman Redpath, seconded by Alderwoman Conley. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-280, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing the execution of contract UE 24-04-17 power line components with Anixor Incorporated, Power Line Supply Company, Brownstown Electrical Supply Company Incorporated, and Graybar Electric Company Incorporated in amount not to exceed $450,000 for the Electric Transmission, Distribution, and Operations Department for the Office of Public Utilities.
Motion by Alderman Redpath for the consent agenda, seconded by Alderman Gregory.
Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk.
2023-281, an ordinance approving payment to Troxel and Company in amount not to exceed $4,600,000 for property insurance policy for 39 City of Springfield properties for a one-year term for the Office of Public Utilities.
Debate.
Second.
A motion for the debate agenda. Was there a second?
Yes, there was.
Seconded by Alderman Gregory. The motion was made by Alderman Redpath to be clear for the debate agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
Public Works, 2023-282, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing the execution of contract number PW 24-04-25 with Martin Equipment Incorporated for the purchase of a 2023 John Deere 410P backhoe for the Office of Public Works in the amount not to exceed $145,950.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Gregory for the consent agenda, seconded by Alderwoman Conley. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk.
2023-283, an ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation for Sixth Street resurfacing between Stanford Avenue and Myrtle Street, MFT Section Number 23-STATE-01-RS, and authorizing payment of $422,970 for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
A motion for the consent agenda by Alderman Hanauer, seconded by Alderman Gregory. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. And one present, Mr. Clerk.
Noted.
That's Alderwoman Purchase, for the record. Motion passes for the consent agenda.
2023-284, resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in the amount up to $422,970 may be used for the Sixth Street resurfacing between Stanford Avenue and Myrtle Street, MFT Section 23-STATE-01-RS, for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion for consent agenda by Alderwoman Noceriano, seconded by Alderman Hanauer. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Present.
All those opposed, nay. One present. That's Alderwoman Purchase. Motion passes. Thank you.
General City Business, 2023-285, an ordinance authorizing amendment to one professional internship agreement with the Board of Trustees for the University of Illinois in the amount of $72,226.98 and for a total amount not to exceed $174,728.74 for the Office of Budget and Management and the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion for the consent agenda by Alderwoman Purchase, seconded by Alderwoman Conley. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-286, an ordinance authorizing renewal of a small government term enterprise license agreement and maintenance agreement from ESRI Environmental Systems and Research Institute, Incorporated, from July 25, 2023 through July 24, 2024, in the amount not to exceed $83,030 for the Office of Public Works, Office of Planning and Economic Development, and Office of Public Utilities.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Gregory for the consent agenda, seconded by Alderman Hanauer. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-287, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of real estate to be used for right-of-way located at 1057 East Ass Street from Monticelli Re-Revocable Trust in the amount not to exceed $2,075, including closing costs.
Motion for consent.
Second.
A motion for the consent by Alderman Gregory, seconded by Alderman Hanauer. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-288, an ordinance approving the appointment of Kristen D. Desenzo to the Springfield Local Liquor Commission.
Move for debate.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Redpath for the debate agenda, seconded by Alderwoman Conley. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion?
She's here. Do you want to?
She is here. Would you like to come up and say a few words, or would you like us to keep rolling?
Keep rolling.
Yeah.
Why don't you come up and introduce yourself?
We miss you already.
For the record, I said keep rolling.
Well, happy birthday, Alderwoman Conley.
And then you get me back.
You're still older than me.
Yes.
Hello, everyone. It's been a full eight weeks since I've been here. I didn't expect to be back here so soon, but it's lovely to see you all, and even more lovely to not see my name up there. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Hanauer.
Mr. Desenzo, what experience do you have in with bars and alcohol? You don't have to answer that. I had to ask.
I like to have fun.
Any real discussion? Alderwoman, thank you for your willingness to serve on the commission, and thanks for being here tonight, and thanks for sending your resume ahead of time. We appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-289, an ordinance to increase the number of class A liquor licenses for Sri Jazandi LLC doing business as Dolly Slot located at 2321 North Dirksen Parkway.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion for the consent agenda by Alderman Rockford, seconded by Alderwoman Conley. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-290, an ordinance authorizing amendment to the redevelopment agreement with Dog-eared LLC, ordinance number 265-06-21, amending the limitations with project to be completed no later than December 31, 2023, and requested funds in the amount of 75% of the cost and not to exceed $100,000 for the facade rehabilitation and easement at 413 through 415 East Adams Street for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for consent.
There's a motion by Alderman Hanauer for the debate agenda. Is there a second?
Alderman Gregory.
Second.
Alderman Gregory seconds. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those. Yes, Alderman Hanauer, without pushing your button.
There's been some discussion or talk about this, and that's the reason why I asked for consent.
Consent or debate?
Debate. Debate. I apologize. What? Why has it taken longer for this to get done? I guess that's the question. I'm, you know, he's asking for increased funds, and he's asking for, I guess, more time. Is that my understanding?
Director?
Yes. Alderman Donlin, too. Can I speak before Director?
Please, Alderwoman.
So I have been in contact constantly with Chris, and he has been waiting for a while, and we had some situations that took place in economic development before Director Yezel got here. So a lot of times, he was just waiting on answers, and I have emails that verify that, too. But she's been in constant contact with him since he's, since she's been the director now.
Okay. Thank you, Alderwoman. Director?
So I did send a timeline, Alderman. Perhaps you didn't see that. And I'm going to ask Chris to come up here also. So this started way back in '21, in the fall of '21, where, you know, part of the pandemic still. He had the ordinance passed before city council. He went to go out for a public bid, which is required of our tip agreements. No bids. He couldn't get any bids. So he got back in touch with economic development and with the mayor and asked, what am I supposed to do? You know, this has never happened before, that, you know, you put out for a public bid and you don't get anything. So he waited and waited and waited for a long time for an answer. What? I'm looking here. Chris, if you want to join me here. You, let's see, you've got the first bid. Okay, so this was in '21, in November. He got the first bid for facade work September '22. He finally got someone to bid on this. Again, only speculating, and you would know best, I'm speculating that there was, you know, nobody around to get this work done, or nobody was doing this sort of work.
I just, I only want to break in to make the clarification.
Could you please identify yourself just for the record, please?
Christopher Nickel. I'm one of, on this, on this particular ordinance, I'm one of the members of the LLC that owns, oh, wait, this is 413. Right. I'm one of the members of the LLC, one of the owners for this particular facade ordinance. The reason I wanted to break in, and I apologize, is because there's three separate facade agreements that will be discussed.
Yeah, you'll see the next two.
And this, this particular one, along with the other small one, we're on a little bit of a different timeline. Her discussion was correct in that I had a lot of trouble getting bids. The first contractor that bid gave me bid on all three projects. So we went ahead and started on the two small ones, even though it was only a single bidder. I came back to the city, the economic development at the time, and I said, I only have one bid. Can I move forward? Because typically, you're required to collect more than one bid and select either the lowest bidder or the, can't remember the terminology.
Most responsible.
Someone who's qualified, most responsi-, right. So I only had one bid. Should I go ahead? I essentially got the nod that, yeah, since you only got one bid, you published it in the paper. There's nothing else to do. So we went ahead and got started on the two small ones. Those are actually in the works right now. The large one, however, because the numbers were so much bigger, economic development and the mayor at the time were uncomfortable with me moving forward because we only had one bid. There was no way to tell if it was a market rate, and because the numbers were so much larger, we, it was requested that I wait until I could get a second bid. So this particular ordinance, the work is underway and should be completed in the next few months.
That was my question. I was going to add. I have no problem with moving this to consent then. I just didn't want it to be where you were just kind of sitting there, and then, you know, the time's running out, and so you're asking for.
Yeah, no, it was, if I can add just a little, a little bit of color from my side, the other reason that this was extra painful is most of you know what has happened to interest rates.
Yeah.
Right? So when I first got the agreement to move forward and wanted to get started, you could get projects like this done at 3.5% or 4%. Well, those days are gone now, so.
Six to eight.
It's been very painful to wait, so I, hopefully, it doesn't keep going that way.
Well, I appreciate you doing this to beautify downtown, get some of these other facades done. It'd be great, so.
Right. And he's been a tremendous developer downtown, if I might say. He's done a lot of work to our downtown area with buildings that other people have walked away from. So I feel comfortable. We vetted all of this. We've gone through his files, built the file, rebuilt the files that we needed. And so I'm comfortable with this, but, and we're going to stand up here once you do what you want to do, because we've got the next two, too.
I'd like to change my, change my.
Alderman Hanauer wishes to change his motion from the debate to the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I still have motion for debate.
Seconded by Alderwoman Purchased. Alderwoman Noceriano.
Yeah, great to hear that your work is going on for the two smaller properties. So are you, so have you bid the large project? Are you going to rebid it?
Yeah, it will, it will be coming up here in the next. And I now have two bids on that.
Oh, great.
And I submitted the second bid to the, I don't, the timeline in front of me.
It was in like March or something.
Right, early, early this year. And that's when the conversations started and then halted again, when I finally had a secondary bid, so that there was some justification that the numbers were as market rate as we could demonstrate at the time.
So you have a contract, then, with a contractor?
I have not signed.
Oh, okay.
I have the two bids. I have not signed the contract with either one of them, mostly because I'm, the fir-, now that that, now that I have the second bid, that first bid is over a year old.
Right.
So I'm going to go back to the initial individual that bid it and say, okay, everything's back on path again. Could, could you please refresh this bid? And then I'll select between the two based on how that bid comes back. Right now, the second bid was lower, but not by a lot. So hopefully, now he will have, because like a lot of contractors, right after COVID, they were a little soft on trying to, you know, they didn't know when they could get things or how, you know, if it took six weeks to get something, maybe the price was going to go up. So I suspect that that first bid had a little cushion in it that maybe we can work ourselves out of, but.
Definitely. Yeah, it should be a better environment for you. Absolutely.
We're hoping so, yeah.
So when do you plan to release that, like, solicitation?
Once this is passed, then he can, he'll, he'll, once we.
You have to put it out for bid again, right?
No.
I don't, I don't believe I'm required to. I guess I would be happy to.
Oh, okay.
I don't, I was only going to go back to the people who already, the two that already gave me bids, and said, we're ready to go if there's any adjustments you want to make to the bid you've already submitted.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thanks.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I still would like to request that this be placed on debate. I just have some follow-up questions, and I'm sure I will be able to have them answered by our next meeting.
Okay, pursuant to our rules, that is in order, and the Chair will confirm that with our Corporation Counsel.
Well, there's been a motion and a second for consent.
Right, but our rules state, Counselor, that if one Alderman requests it to be on debate, and what I'm really asking is, do we, I guess, is that a, that's the, that's the motion that supersedes, and I guess I need a second, just to be safe, right? Second from Alderman Williams.
So, so it would move to debate at this point?
Yes, sir. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-291, an ordinance authorizing amendment to the redevelopment agreement with Vegas Line Properties LLC, ordinance number 2263-06-21, amending the time limitations with project to be completed no later than December 31, 2023, and requested funds in the amount of 75% of the cost, not to exceed $100,000 for facade rehabilitation assistance at 215 South Fifth Street for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for debate.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Gregory for the debate agenda, seconded by Alderman Williams. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk.
2023-292, an ordinance authorizing amendment to the redevelopment agreement with 629 East LLC, ordinance number 264-06-21, amending scope of work to include roof replacement, time limitations with project to be completed no longer, completed no later than June 30, 2024, and requested funds in the amount of 75% of the cost, not to exceed $362,000 for facade rehabilitation, architectural assistance, easement, and roof replacement at 629 and 631 East Adams Streets and 123 South 7th Street for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for debate.
Second.
Motion for the debate by Alderman Gregory, seconded by Alderman Williams. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-293, an ordinance approving a third amendment to a lease agreement between the City of Springfield and Springfield Grand Hotel LLC for property located at 109 through 111 North 7th Street.
Is there a motion?
Move for consent. Second.
A motion by Alderman Redpath for the consent agenda, seconded by Alderman Gregory. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-294, an ordinance authorizing purchase of two Tahoe PPV command vehicles in the amount of $120,301 from Carl Emergency Vehicles for the Springfield Police Department.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion for the consent agenda by Alderman Redpath, seconded by Alderwoman Conley. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-295, an ordinance authorizing a three-year renewal of a professional services agreement with Sound Thinking Incorporated, formerly known as ShotSpotter Incorporated, for annual ShotSpotter subscription services, formerly known as Respond, for an annual amount of $290,063 and for a total amount of $870,188 over a three-year period for the Springfield Police Department.
Move for consent. Second.
A motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Alderman Williams.
So I just want to ask the Chief.
I don't think your mic's on, Alderman.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to ask the Chief real quick. The ShotSpot, is this the same guy that came and did the presentation, the same group, same people?
The ShotSpotter is now called Sound Thinking. They've just changed the name of their company. It's the exact same technology, exact same agreement that we entered into.
Thank you. I just, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-296, an ordinance authorizing the execution of contract RFP FD 24-10 with SCBAS Incorporated for the purchase, purchase and installation of a breathing air compressor system and fill station for an amount not to exceed $75,025 for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. I understand, Mr. Clerk. That's the end of the ordinances for consideration this evening, so we'll move along to unfinished business. Does any member of the council have unfinished business? Alderman Redpath.
Yes. Last week, we talked about fly dumping, and obviously, the state's attorney heard about it. So I talked to Corporation Counsel, and he was in touch with him, and if he would, please give us a report on your conversation with the state's attorney.
Sure. So I talked with state's attorney Wright the Wednesday morning following our meeting, and we discussed the practices and procedures for, for fly dumping. Our office currently has two fly dumping cases open. We have not referred any for criminal prosecution. We are working on our procedure. Again, we have, we have, we're a civil ordinance violation. So if you fly dump and we investigate it, we have a different standard of proof that we have to meet, and we levy monetary fines. The state's attorney, if they are referred, his office will review the case and prosecute to any case that he believes he can meet the standard of beyond a reasonable doubt for the fly dumping. But again, we have not referred any. My office is working on procedures where if we have repeat offenders or the same violations, or if the violation is to such an extent where it rises to a criminal level, we will certainly refer them over to the state's attorney's office. So it is something that my office is aware of, and we've, we are keeping an eye on it, and I'm happy to provide any reports for the fly dumping cases that we do have.
And just as a matter of clarification, state's attorney was concerned that we were referring to him not prosecuting some of our cases, and that wasn't the case. I would, I would receive unsolicited phone calls in Texas from members of another board who said that they had issues with fly dumping and they weren't being addressed by the, by the state's attorney's office. I've always known that the process is going to be that we use our municipal court as administrative court to start the process on the civil side, and then when it gets to the point of beyond civil litigation, that we move it over to the criminal side, to the state's attorney's office. So I do have faith in the state's attorney's office. Dan Wright's a good state's attorney, and I know he will cooperate with us. And I'm, I'm very confident in our Corporation Counsel will make sure that that process goes smoothly, and that we're going to do our best to try to get a handle on this thing, because it's not just the City of Springfield. It's in the county, and it's everywhere else. And it's repeat offenders that we are looking at to try to address this problem. And I can tell you that with the, with the diligence of this city council, every one of us want to see this thing get, get put under control. And with this, this Corporation Counsel, who is a bulldog, in my opinion, we're going, we're going to do okay. So thank you for that, and we're going to move forward, and hopefully, we're going to start cleaning this mess up. Thank you.
Alderman Williams.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to remind Corporate Counsel, I'm still waiting on some information on, on your opinion on the ordinance that I referred to dealing with timeframes of appointments. Would like it before next Tuesday, because we just moved it on to the debate, and I'm trying to just get some clarity. I did vote yes for debate. I'm, I'm, nothing against the person being appointed. It's all about the rule and how that rule was applied to others. So I just, I'm waiting. If you'll just send it to me, I appreciate it. So I'll have time to look at it before we have the debate next Tuesday. And then the second piece is, since the mayor's not up here, I guess the deputy mayor, I'm still waiting on some, some resume information or something. I just truly believe anytime we're paying somebody almost $100,000, we should see a resume. So if you could please look into that on, because I haven't received either yet. Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up a little bit on Alderman Redpath, in case so that people know that what we do in this ord-, in this room also brings about some positive change. After our last conversation about all the fly dumping and, you know, highlighting the fact that we do have haulers who are licensed, I had someone reach out to me who actually doesn't even live in the city, and wanted just some information about how to contract with a licensed waste hauler to make sure that they were doing the right thing and getting some garbage, some stuff, you know, cleaned up from their property and, and being responsible. So I certainly appreciate that. It takes all of us as a community to make these changes and being more aware of what's going on, which was generated by this conversation around this horseshoe. I really appreciate that this person reaching out to me, and hopefully, that's one less instance of fly dumping, so.
Alderman Rockford.
Corporation Counsel, we are talking about repeat offenders. Now, are we going to set something up to where, you know, if we get somebody coming back three, four, five times, what, are we going to set a limitation, or how are we going to proceed with presenting this to the state's attorney, to, for criminal, you know?
Right. So right now, our, our procedure on the civil side is it escalates for fines. It's 500 and then 1,000 for every subsequent violation. But certainly, if, if there is evidence there and there is a repeat offender, we will refer it. We'll at least, we'll give the case file to the state's attorney's office, and then, again, it's a, it's an independent determination on whether there's enough to prosecute criminally. But with repeat offenders, our process is going to be turn it over, turn the file over. Right. Yeah.
Thank you.
Is, Alderman, Mr. Chairman, is a follow-up on that?
Yeah.
Kind of follow-up on that?
Sure. Alderman Redpath.
And, and you know, there also is EPA violations. If, the EPA violations would not go through our civil process, it would basically automatically go to the criminal side, to the state's attorney's office. When we're talking about civil penalties, we're talking about what we can do in our administrative courts. And then if it's, if it's severe enough that violates an EPA violation, that automatically will go to state's attorney. Is that correct?
So an EPA violation would be, that would go to the state's attorney, and then it would also be investigated by the state, by state agencies. So there, there's multiple steps there, just depending on what's going on. From, from our perspective in the, in the city side, certainly, we would look at it and the violations of our code, and then discuss with the proper agencies, whether it be the state attorney, the state attorney's office, or I E P A, whoever we need to talk to with what we're seeing and what our police are investigating.
And that's the good part of the coordination we have with our Corporation Counsel through the state's attorney, all the way up to the Department of EPA. So we know that we got several different levels that we can attack this, this problem with. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Alderman. You know, it's, again, I can't stress enough, we all have, I'm sure, plenty of examples in our individual wards, let alone, as Alderwoman I'm sure, plenty of examples in our individual wards, let alone, as Alderwoman Conley outlined, areas even right outside the city where this occurs. But if we could, if we could catch the mad fly dumpers that are off of West, off of Amos Street, onto West Madison, that ramp over there, which this, again, I said this before, but it's just, it's disheartening. A gentleman that I personally know, he, it's his birthday today, by the way, happy birthday. He gets a bucket every week, and he has to clean up the same bottles, the same McDonald's wrappers, the same diapers. I mean, it's like the same people are doing this over and over again. And I know our staff's working hard at catching these people, but if they're repeat offenders, we need to take it all the, as far as we can, because it's absolutely ridiculous. I just can't believe people live like that. Alderman Hanhour.
Thank you. Speaking of repeat offenders, I got an email today regarding our tree trimming crew that goes out and trims the trees around the power lines. And this, this guy is not happy about how things were done. He said that they obliterated trees and around the power lines, and they, you know, we've all seen it. We got to, we got to get, I mean, we've all gotten, if, I think we've all gotten some heat over this. Something needs to change with it. And I sent it to Doug, and he had, you know, they haven't had a chance to respond, but I would ask that somebody go out and take a look and see what this guy's talking about. And, you know, it doesn't have to necessarily be people, trees on people's property. They, if they have a field, you know, like a field or something in the back, they still rely on those trees, and you got a group come in, and they just, you know, just make the trees look bad. I just think we need to, we need to do something, you know, we may have to, we may have to really think about it when we, when we, you know, vote on that eight million dollar bid, because they got to do a better job. And, you know, they're just like some of the other people. They don't, nobody knows when they're coming, it seems like. They just come through and with reckless abandon, and that's what we're left with. So, you know, Doug, I'd appreciate it if you'd have somebody go out, talk to the gentleman, and take a look and see what we can, you know, if we can talk to the tree company, tree trimming companies or group. So, thank you.
Any new business come before the committee?
Yes.
Alderwoman Purchase.
I pressed the button. This Thursday, we have Levin Amp, and our headliner is Betty with the opener of Unchained, and that's starting at six P M., and it is sponsored none other than moi. It will be going on at six P M., and fireworks will be taking off at nine thirty P M., and we hope to see you all there. And just one more, Alderman Donnelly. We have the Springfield J C's Capital City Celebration, so lots of fireworks shows going on. And we also would like to invite you to bring your furry friends out, and we have a patriotic contest on Saturday at six forty-five P M. But right before then, we have Capitol Sound coming on stage at two P M., and just waiting for the dust to settle, and we will have another fireworks show. So, please come out, and don't forget your furry friends. Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley.
I have two things, first of all. Building on the furry friends concept, just a reminder to people to be respectful this weekend, this long weekend with fireworks. One of the most consistent complaints I get in the summer is the level of stress that certain residents and their animal family members experience with excessive firework displays. Also, really a note of caution, it's extraordinarily dry right now. I don't know what that rain was that kind of blew by last night, yesterday, but it did nothing. We're in a moderate drought, mild to moderate drought, which means that there's a lot of dead grass, or at least flammable. Things are blowing. Just ask people to really take that into consideration this year and practice a little restraint in setting off fireworks. And then, the other, the other bit of new business, Alderwoman, or, sorry, former Alderwoman DeSensio outed that it's my birthday tonight, get to spend it with all y'all. But I would also like to wish my new seatmate, Alderman Carlson, a belated happy birthday, so we share the weekend.
Happy birthday.
Although I'm also claiming next weekend, just so you know.
June's a good month.
June's a good month.
And since she brought that up, I won't spoil the fun, but I, our one and only Tony Thompson is celebrating a birthday as well. So, Tony, the voice from above.
Is today Tony's birthday?
I don't know if it's today, but it's tomorrow.
He's still coming close on the June. We'll allow. Great. Happy birthday.
Anything else, Alderwoman?
No, thank you very much, Alderman.
Citizens request to address the committee. First on the docket is Alderman Donnelly.
Oh, thank you.
Chief, you want to talk about fireworks? Please.
It is in your job title.
You know anything about fire?
I don't know anything about fireworks. So, you brought up the fact that it's a super dryout, and we have been monitoring fireworks. We've got several professional displays going on. Our biggest thing, our message has been leave it to the professionals. We are each day checking weather reports and all that to make sure that we can safely do these professional displays. We will have one more report with all of the shooters tomorrow before we make a decision. But do know that it is a possibility, if we slip into drought conditions, that we might have to cancel these professional displays, but we will keep everyone in the public posted, so.
Thank you very much.
It is something that the shooters have had concern about, and other areas such as champagne have already canceled their displays. So, remind the public of that as well, because we do know that there are probably more public displays out there than professional displays. So, please be fire-conscious, and have a good Fourth, happy Fourth of July.
Thank you.
Chief, I appreciate the information.
We certainly hope that your crews stay nice and quiet all week.
Absolutely. Citizens request to address the committee. We have first on the agenda, Alex Rockford.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Alex Rockford. I live in Ward Three, and I'm a lifelong North Ender and Springfield resident. I currently work at Lawrence Education Center as their workplace coordinator. In my role, I oversee a grant-funded program called Prepare Youth to Work and a number of workforce development activities for all of our students. Over the last year, I've had the pleasure of serving as a grant administrator for the Brighter Futures Collaborative, a grant we received in partnership with the city of Springfield for the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three school year. I would like to take a moment to express not only my gratitude, but gratitude on behalf of us at Lawrence Education Center to all of the aldermen and alderwomen who supported and approved this grant. You will find more detailed information about the Brighter Futures Collaborative and its progress on the provided handout. For those who are unfamiliar with this grant and all it provides, this grant is for adolescents and adults ages sixteen and older who are enrolled at L E C and live within a prioritized R three zone. I've also included a map of the R three zones for those who are unfamiliar of those areas. Qualified students can earn incentives, are provided with a number of career exploration opportunities in high-demand career fields, and receive transition services and additional support to remove any barriers to their success. This includes, but is not limited to, transportation, food, and funding for additional training. This grant is set up to serve seventy-five students per school year. In the last year, one hundred and nineteen L E C students qualified for brighter futures. Of those one hundred and nineteen, eighty-three percent of those are minority students, and over seventy-five percent of those students come from low-income households. Sixty-four students earned incentives throughout the school year, totaling almost twenty-five thousand dollars. Unfortunately, students who earned incentives in May and June, a total of seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, have yet to receive them from the city. Twenty-four of these students graduated this school year, and through this grant, we were able to provide fourteen thousand dollars in scholarships. We funded C N A training for five students, four of which completed and are now certified C N As in the state of Illinois. This is simply scratching the surface of the positive impact this grant and partnership has made. It's been a pleasure and honor to serve on this grant, and I'm proud to say that some of the students who have benefited from the Brighter Futures Collaborative are in the audience tonight. We've been saddened in the recent weeks to not see an ordinance for the extension of this grant. As we were informed, it would be extended through June of twenty twenty-five. The current grant period is set to expire this Friday, June thirtieth. We are beginning to plan for the upcoming school year and hope, with all of your support, to continue the Brighter Futures Collaborative and positively impact and provide opportunities for one of the most inneed and at-risk populations in our community. Thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you. So, this is, this is part of the reason why I wanted to put, you know, those other TIF expenditures on debate, because I knew we had several, several situations like this coming up, where we have grant funds that are set to expire, and we have not fought to extend them. This is free money. This ain't TIF money that we're setting aside and can have another business. This is grant money, free money, the R three money, this is state funds. And while I'm speaking on this, because a lot of these census tracts is in Ward Two, the building is in Ward Six, is planning to move to Ward Ten. So, this is all of our problems. There's no reason, I don't know why you don't have the money. I'm sure Vout will have explanation for that, and I don't know why we are not extending it, but we should. You know, it's for young people, so I would certainly support that, and I hope my council members support that, too. We should always go after every bit of grant money. I said this with the last administration. I told Robbie and Ms. Lynn, there's no reason why we shouldn't be going for the second round of our three grants. There's three categories that we can do for this, you know, that not only the city, but organizations from this city. We know several of them out in our community have received our three money, some upwards to six hundred thousand dollars, doing good work with reentry, incubation, several, several, several different things. So, this is a tool for us as a city to really, to really help out in these areas here, and I'll do all I can to try to see this through and see that we extend it. And so, I appreciate you for bringing this information.
Thank you.
Alderman Williams.
Yes. I would like to hear from the department planning the net number of development this year, on what's going on with this grant and why we haven't.
Chris Yezel.
Let me just say, it's part of the state, part of it. So, we had been given something that we had to put through ordinance, and then they called us back and told us, no, you can just extend it by a docu-sign. So, they did that, and the mayor signed that just this morning, because they finally sent us the documentation to do a docu-sign. So, as much as it looks like it's the fault of the city, not so much.
But it is looking good.
Oh, yeah. We've done the docu-sign to move forward with it.
Thank you, Bill. I love it when a plan comes together.
I know, absolutely.
Alderman Carlson.
Alex, just for clarification, is this, have you had to come here before? Is this a year-to-year grant, or something brand-new this year?
This was brand-new this year.
Okay.
So, this was the first year of the grant.
Okay. All right.
Before you do.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, next signed up is Bruce Clark. Bruce, are you here, Mr. Clark?
He was.
Going once, going twice. Okay, we'll move along.
Could I just say something for Mr. Clark?
Alderman Redpath.
He's got a project going on, and is one of those situations with the funds being extended. Is he still here? And I just, I think I need to talk to the mayor about this, and maybe economic development before we get going, but just want to make sure. Is he still here? Okay. Hey, Bruce, could you?
Mr. Clark, you're on.
Bruce, you're on.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's how it is, right?
It happens every time.
Thanks for coming down.
I have a few things that I'd like to pass out to you, if it's okay. Kind of helps me to, of course, my name is Bruce Clark. I'm from, the owner of Bourbon Street, and I'm here to try to save that place a little bit if I can. And I don't like doing this because it'd be hard on me. I'd like some of these guys to get a chance to see these architectural drawings that Wes Corrigan to each or-
We can't read all that in one night, Bruce.
Huh?
We can't read all that in one night.
No, no, just shoot by it real quickly, okay? So, it's going to be real quick.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Maybe between two.
Do you have an extra one?
Yes, I do, really. More than I have?
I'm good. I done seen it. I done seen it. Trust me.
Yeah, I'll take one for the record. Thanks.
Got one more?
Wait till you get to the podium, would you, Bruce? Bruce, wait till you get to the podium. We can't hear you. I got it. Thank you.
You can pass it around if you want.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Yep, we'll give you the extras.
Clark, did you get a copy of this?
I did.
Okay.
Clark, please, proceed.
Okay. I'm going to say if you want to turn to the first page, and it kind of lets you see what, they call it the shake, but it's my kitchen out there, and that's what I'm trying to put together out there in the back. If you can see next to it, that's where we're going to pour concrete out there. So, we got some rocks out there and stuff. We want to get rid of that, so people don't be tripping all over that. But there are some questions that you're going to ask me, which I don't know that much about, because Wes Corrigan was the one that put this together. Okay, so, on them codes and things of that, I'm not going to answer those. But if you go back to the back, you'll see what we're building, and that was the deck in the back. So, that, I can talk a little bit more about it. This letter here is what, we were having the hardest time trying to make building and zoning happy. So, Wes, and we probably had to change this at least four times to get him to where he will be okay with it, so we can be safe, I understand what they're saying, to make it right there. So, between me in the middle, listening and watching them go back and forth, and I'm just the runner, you know, just take it to them and drop it off, and they look at it. If they like it, fine. If they don't, back at it again. So, I left another one today. Hopefully, it might be something that we can work with, and that's why I'm here. And through that, of the time of waiting, it took up about three months away from me. So, I didn't get a chance to do any of my work, and so that took a lot from me. So, I'm asking to get some time back to me, so I can finish the job at Bourbon Street, so we can finish what we, beautiful job that's going to happen. If you can see the deck in the back, how that's going to really be better, it's going to be pretty. All there on Bourbon Street, it's going to be pretty nice, and that would be nice for us to have for our club out there. So, that's why I'm here. See if we can get some, a little more time out of that, so I can get that done, because Friday is over for me.
Mr. Clark, is that, are you through with your presentation?
That's all I have to say about it.
Alderman Redpath?
Yeah, I think what Mr. Clark is talking about, and I think it's something that we all know about, the mayor and the city council, the red tape that people have to go through to get some of these projects done is crazy. It's crazy. We, they have to keep coming back, going back and forth, back and forth. And we've always talked about, on this council, streamlining situations to get processes through, so we can get permits issued, so we can get people underway to get construction. In the last years, it's been terrible. It takes people months, and sometimes even years, to get projects through our processes. This is a quality product. It really is. Mr. Clark is a good businessperson, who's been around for a long time, and I can tell you that he's trying to save what he's got over there. And I would really encourage us and the mayor to consider that we judge these situations on a case-by-case basis. There are people that are going to procrastinate and delay because they just don't know what the heck they're doing. As you can see by these drawings, these architectural drawings and stuff, they're actually got a good plan, and it's going to be a plan that's going to be beneficial to the city of Springfield. I really think that, I'm asking Ms. Yezel if she would look at this and look at this, a lot of this stuff on a case-by-case basis. I don't know what's going on in your department. I don't. So, I'm not accusing or making accusations or anything else. I'm just saying that here we have a business guy who's really trying to make the right thing happen, and I think thing happen, and I think if we, if we take these cases base by base, based on each individual case, that we can try to help them. We don't want to see this project fail. We got enough downtown projects that are never gonna get fixed. But when you got somebody that's working as hard as he's doing, and putting together a project with detailed plans that are right on target, and I know our inspectors have to be diligent to make sure that we're doing the right thing, but we gotta, we gotta look at, we can't do this on a shotgun situation. We have to go case by case to make sure that we're getting, that we got somebody that's actually moving forward. I understand you have a hole in the ground, you gotta put tons and tons of concrete in to get, to get this thing rolling.
Well, one of the biggest thing is that we gotta put those pillars in the ground. And so I can't move it to do that, anything, until we get that done. That has to be in the ground, and so we done dug in the ground, probably five feet in the ground, just waiting to get this done.
And you know, it doesn't have to be that we give them a year extension. We can, we can do this on a contingency situation where we give them a little bit of time to, yeah, come on up, please, because, look, I'm just, I'm just, I just want to see that we get justice to the point where some.
He knows, he and I've had more than a few conversations on this project. And so when I came in, of course, there's nothing I can do until it's approved through building and zoning. So Dave and I have spoken, there were several times that he was denied for fire safety, correct? That was the one that was holding us up most of the time. So Dave, Director Fuchs, sorry, and I have had discussions on this. So Dave, if you'd like to step up here and tell us what you've.
While he's coming up, I have a quick question. When was this project started with this? When did you first reach out to the city? Was it a month ago or a long time ago?
March 27.
Yes, it was in March.
Of this year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and is there a zoning request, or is it all departmental approvals?
It's already zoned.
It's already zoned, so it doesn't have to go through that arduous process. Mr. Fuchs, please.
But just let me interject. There was a situation that the money was held up for a long time, so you couldn't even get started, is that right? And that's been over a long, there's a lot of variables that are in this thing.
Okay, so it has been a long time.
So there's a lot of things going on here that we need to consider. And we don't want to shut down a situation, a job like this, if we can, if we can save it. Look, we're gonna run into people that are just plain procrastinators, and they're gonna do delays, just be delaying. He's not doing that. He's been diligent on all this. So we need to, we need to be serious about this and say, hey, look, we can't judge this based on a group situation, we have to do it on a base, case by case.
Yeah, I appreciate, we appreciate you coming down and giving us the facts. Mr. Fuchs?
Yes, this has been a process that started in March, as far as office was concerned. There have been a number of plans that have been submitted, they were reviewed, and in some cases found wanting. We took it back to the architect and adjustments were made. It does take time for everybody to review it and make sure that it is safe, and that is our primary concern. We spoke this afternoon, and we agreed, safety is what we're all about. The building code, every line of the building code is written in blood. Those rules are there because someone has died or been injured, and we don't want to see that happen. And I know you don't, you want to provide a great venue and an opportunity for everybody, and we've done everything we can to move this forward.
Thank you, David. Mr. Fuchs, you know, I think, Mr. Clark, you have the two people that you need to talk to, directly to your right, and I trust that they will do anything and everything to keep things moving along as quickly as possible. But I, you know, over the years, I must say, and I'm not attacking anybody, but I must say that I've been in meetings with developers and administrative folks before, from the city side, and the answer was, and I'm not gonna give the specific example, because you'll know what project, but it was, no, 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 we can't do that. And it was never, how do we make this work within our rules that we have? And Director Fuchs is absolutely right, the rules are extremely important, but I am confident that with the two individuals to your right, that we'll be able to find a solution, and as Alderman Redpath is pushing for, to keep this moving along as fast as possible. It's wonderful that you would like to reinvest in the community and keep things moving along. That's exciting, because not every business owner is able to do that, nor do they want to do that. So thank you for coming down. We have a Christmas tree of individuals that are on the council that have requests to speak. We'll start out with Alderman Rockford.
Mr. Clark, this is going north on 11th Street, right behind your, behind your building?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That was easy, Alderman.
Actually, we put a kitchen together out there, and that's one of the biggest things we're looking for too, to get started, to, that'll help out our community too. And some of my people that are there, I think we have problems when people, I've had a few drinks or something of that, but we've got food there to help them out, to slow some of that down. So that will help too.
Alderman Carlson.
Sir, so are you, sir, are you asking for a variance then, or have you already run into roadblocks where they have said no, you know, our permitting office? Or are you asking for a variance to do this project?
What I'm asking for, we got locked in building and zoning, I think that's what we got caught at, I did apparently. And so that's kind of like, took all the time, waiting, trying to get the okay so that we could go. So basically, that's what stopped me, you know, right in my, couldn't do anything, and I'm still there.
Oh, no, I'm all in favor. I mean, to me, anytime we can talk about, what I say, downtown building and zoning or permitting office, you know, we have to do everything we can to help people like you. I mean, we aren't Peoria where we have Caterpillar, we're not Bloomington where they have State Farm. I mean, we have so many parcels of property, it may be more than I should say, but we have so many parcels of property that are off the tax rules. To me, we need to do everything we can to help small business, you know, to me, we gotta expand the pie, we gotta build more increment to get more property tax revenue. We're just not like any other cities with all these properties off the tax rules. So, yeah, I mean, I'm frustrated as well, because I hear from developers, you know, constantly. It's just, you know, coming downtown and jumping through all the hoops that they have to is just unnerving, and this is just another example of it. So I wish you luck, and whatever we can do or I can do, just call. Thanks.
Alderman Gregory.
I just want to say thank you to everybody speaking up on these, on this businesses in War II, and, you know, a lot of times I think that they need to hear that we understand and others understand besides Sean and Roy, and that we support them, and, you know, I'm happy to hear and that you guys are gonna, you know, get some work. But just give a little background on this, it's a cannabis grant, he's a cannabis awardee. And there was a agreement for whatever that was rewritten in December, because a lot of the people who were awarded, we had various problems, whether it was getting checks or some, and da-da-da, and the date for that was set for June 30th, and for whatever reason. So a lot of, a lot of our businesses who have not completed, and I've had a great conversation with Director Yezel about this, I think everybody knows how I feel about it. But it's really, really important to our community to see the Bruces, Clay's Barbecue, whatever boys needs to finish, to really finish these things off. Again, I repeat, and I understand, I don't think it does anything to us, it doesn't hurt us, it's not money that we're setting aside for someone else to use, like similar to TIFs, and I just hope that this program continue to be beneficial. If you ride down 11th Street, there's multiple businesses that have taken advantage and have completed their cannabis grants, and it's starting to pay dividends out to our community. So, thank you.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to echo from you, Chair. We recently had a meeting, I think it was last week or the week before, and I have great hope in Director Fuchs and Director Yezel, because with my business downtown, we ran into the same snag, but sitting together in a room and having all of us put our heads together, we figured out a solution. And no, we didn't break the rules, but we figured out how we can help with them getting an increase of the amount of people that could be in that building. Some of these structures are so old that we have to figure out what we can do to help the businesses, so I do thank you for coming forward, and that, those are the approaches that I've been taking with my businesses downtown, because we encounter all types of pickups and hurdles that we come across. But having everybody in a room and really figuring it out, it has been helpful. So thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
Alderman Hannah.
I just wanted to tell you I had hope that it'd be, get fixed too.
Thank you. Alderman Hannah.
Thank you. I, I've dealt with this as well with some developers, I've always found that it is better, instead of throwing emails and mail back and forth, snail mail a lot of cases, that we get and get someone to sit down with all the parties, and that's, you gotta bring your engineer, and you gotta bring your architect, and we bring our people in. And, you know, it's amazing how much you can get done when people are sitting across a table from each other. And you got, we got certain people that their, things are black and white, and they're not, they're not gonna budge, and tell their bosses next to them, and all of a sudden they realize, okay, well, maybe, maybe we can do it this way and that way.
That's what happened.
You know? I mean, it's true, we've seen a lot of that. And, and I just wish that there was some way that when we start seeing letters going back and forth like a ping pong match, that we could somehow trigger that. That's why I like having a complete online system that, when it's so many, so many letters goes back and forth, then it triggers a meeting. And I think that that's something we need to maybe look at, Mayor, and I know you haven't dove into that area yet, you've been a little busy with other areas, like Vauw's area, and so I would just hope that we look at that. But thank you for your interest, and it looks pretty cool what you're doing, so that's great. Thank you.
Again, Mr. Clark, thank you for coming, thanks for your willingness to reinvest in our community, and I, again, trust that these two individuals to your right will keep things moving along for you.
Okay.
Thank you. Next on the docket, next thing, next on the docket this evening is Alice Ramey. Alice?
You can be here.
You wish to speak?
You don't have to.
This is gonna be a hack.
All right, all right, all right.
All right.
You sure?
I don't know. But do you remember when the fire chief came here and had got a grant for door, put on the doors to protect you, the lockbox, okay? Well, I got mine today. And I think everyone that has a senior grandmother, or grandpa, or aunt, or uncle, or whoever, even you, should have the lockbox, because it's something more secure for you in case something happens, and they can't, they can get to a phone maybe and call 911, but to get in, they have to break the door because she may not be able to get up, him or her, okay? And I am glad I got mine, and I appreciate the chief for coming out and putting it in and doing what he had to do. I think everybody needs to do this. On another note is that I appreciate my alderman. Sometimes he gets very bold, which I do too, so we're both in the same bold part, okay? But I think that fly dumping is very bad, okay? They used to do it on my lot, until one day I called the police officer and told him to come down. We went through and we found out who was doing it, and he took care of it. I haven't had any of that yet, again, in my lot. And, but I think we need to be more in tune to what is going on around in our neighborhoods, and write down the addresses, make sure you got it all done. And really, the most important thing is pictures. And I brought a lot of pictures up here when they were dumping on my lot, until I got the police officer to come out and do it and go through it, okay? And I think it's time, and another thing is, you guys, it's Poplar Place. Poplar Place has got to go.
Agreed.
Okay? Has to go or do something, because he didn't spray those buildings after being closed up for 15 years. They had all kinds of bugs and everything in them, he didn't spray it. Now, the people that are on the, on one side by Poplar, they're getting them all, and then now they're shoving them over here, over on Livingston. And it's pretty bad when you go out to your driveway and you have to take a broom with you to sweep the bugs away, okay? And it's getting pretty bad. And I told the guy over there, the manager, whoever it is that runs around in that little car, he says, well, we didn't have the money to do it. I said, okay, fine, you know, I didn't go any further. But I thought they got enough money to take care of that and tear it down and do it right. I know you're looking at me kind of strangely, okay? Because I live there, okay? I know what it's like. And also, I got a name for it, Monopoly Park, because they're all gonna look like the Monopoly Houses. That's what I want. Well, I'm sorry, I wanted to make it happy for you.
Good, man, good.
You guys all have a beautiful evening and a happy Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving would be nice.
You won't see it till latter Thanksgiving, is that what you're saying?
I mean, 4th of July, I want everybody to be safe, everybody have a beautiful time, enjoy whatever the parties are, and that's it.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving.
Golda Rass.
Good evening, how are you?
Good evening.
I'm here on the behalf of Mr. Gregory and Mr. Williams. Recently, last month, my son's car, his window got busted out. It took from 3:00, time I got in touch with Lakeisha, to 5:00 in the morning to have a police report even written out.
I agree, I think she should.
Okay, well, she's been informed on the crime activity happening in our area, and Mr. Sean Gregory is awesome, he has been informed as well. Going on, there's been nuisance problems in the building that I currently live in, I've been there for five years plus. I came in during the air of Mr. Williams and Ms. Lakeisha Purchase married. They had a fallout, and the property was up in the air, okay? Well, since then, I had plenty of problems with tenants in the building, cursing me out, disrespecting me, calling me out my name, saying they're gonna whip my tail and this and that and the other, okay? Sunday, I called Lakeisha, like, in the afternoon hours, because I, I had to resign from one of my jobs, so I had to recuperate. So, moving forward, nothing's been done. I called the police, and it took like 35, between 30 to 45 minutes to even get the first set out. Well, they came out, but I was disrespected by two, one of the officers that knew me personally. And I didn't appreciate that. And it gotten, the abuse of the tenants got really bad, where I had to reach out with, to Sean Gregory. And we can't do much because it's owned by Lakeisha Purchase, which I've brought up to her many a times, that I'm getting bothered. My unit's not even been fixed, I've been fighting this for two years.
Ma'am, I would, if I can interject here, give you a breather as well. We, we have a couple different avenues, I think, that would be helpful when you have issues like you're describing. One is, we do have a, and it sounds like you've tried to reach out to the police department for issues that are obviously not lawful, or you feel threatened. The other is, we do have, and I understand that you went and met with our Office of Community Relations, our director, Ethan Posey, just about last week, and he and I had a discussion about that meeting, and none of these issues were, at least from what I understand, and maybe I'm wrong, none of these issues were brought forward. I would encourage you that when you have an issue with, whether it's a landlord, whoever it is in the world, it doesn't matter, his office can help with those issues. That's one of the reasons why we're there. If people have problems with businesses, or landlord-tenant issues, his office, if they can't, if they can't directly do something, they can certainly direct you, point you in the right direction to help get issues resolved.
I've been to the city.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, many a times the cities came out to inspect my unit. She got fined for it, but that's all that took place. And then they came up with the, oh, Hilda, you can move, that's not easily said, because I don't have the money to move, okay? But there's other issues in the neighborhood, that, you know, the fly by dump, dumping, we took care of that. There's limited, there's not as much, okay? And then there's abandoned buildings where we can turn into community out, you know, outreach for the children. So, and I was currently brought that up with Mr. Sean and Mr. Williams Jr., about having something the kids can do, because not all mothers could afford, you know, just. something the kids can do, because not all mothers could afford, you know, just sending them off somewhere, like day camps, so.
Yeah, I, again, I think having that conversation-
But, what brought me here today-
If I can, I think having that conversation with Mr. Posey, and I know the chief's to your left there, he's itching to say a few words as well. If you have issues, and you mentioned some issues possibly with the department, meaning the Police Department, the chief is the person to talk to about those issues specifically offline here. We want to help you. I also understand that for that particular property, that there is some management company involved, I would encourage you to contact them directly.
There is, there is. But, that only, that only covers Lakeisha for what her responsibilities are.
Yeah.
You know? But, if, I'm the kind of person that, because I had this many years back with Donovan Bolts, he was the head DCFS person, that lacked responsibility, too.
Sure. Since Mr. Posey isn't here this evening, he did pass along that if you need to speak with him, please reach out to him. You obviously have his number, because you've met with him already. He certainly has, you have his ear. And the chief, he's off to your left, please chat with him about the issues you brought up tonight. We thank you for coming. And Chief, if you want to say anything, you're certainly welcome to.
Absolutely, I do feel obligated to say a few words, and just to rebut some of those comments. Obviously, the men and women of the Springfield Police Department work extremely hard in what they do. And sometimes, there does become a time when it takes a while for us to answer calls for service, calls are based upon priorities and whatnot, so we can certainly look into that. I will say, this is not the forum to make complaints against my men and women, and that we have proper chain, that's through Internal Affairs Investigation. And I don't appreciate anyone coming and just lobbing out generic claims about disrespect. The good thing is, is that we have body cams that will certainly capture this particular encounter, as well as any other encounter. And if we need to go about it through the proper chain, which is Internal Affairs, then that's what we'll do. I'd be happy to answer any question, if anyone had anything about that.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Clark, I understand that no other citizen has signed up ahead of time to speak, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, is there a need for executive session, Mr. Corporation Counsel?
Mr. Chair?
No need.
Alderman Gregory.
If I may, thank you. I will say that we have, our public work team has addressed many, many issues with this situation. And I've spoke to Ms. Reyes, she's a fan of mine now, but just a few months ago, she was ready to run against me. So, I just wanna, I just wanna just assure you that some of the things that you talked to me about are very, very hard to deal with. And, you know, calling the police is the proper way to do it, like we talked about. And me and Lakeisha have talked about this. We've tried, I've been over there with you, shoveling snow, helping you with your car, when it was time. So, we do care about you, we're not ignoring you. I do hear you speak about kids and youth, and we have worked tremendously hard with the park district. There's a $400,000 grant that they'll match, they'll redo Kiwanis Park over there to do some good things, because we do know that. And we do hear our constituents. So, I just ask that you give us a chance to keep working, because that's, you know, that whole area, we're trying to improve, not only in yours, and at times, it's just people. And it's very, very hard for us to deal with, at times, to change people and hearts and minds. But, we are working, and we are trying to do something for our youth, even in that area. You got the outlet not too far away, we're trying to put money in that park. You can best believe the houses that are behind you, that are $150,000 houses, they're on top of us, too, about their community. So, we hear you, and we will keep working, and call me anytime. Even when you're mad, I'll take those calls, okay? I try to give you the roy, but you're still in my war, so, I thank you, all right?
Thank you. Just a reminder for everyone, I love, we love seeing each other, I'm sure, on Tuesday nights, but next week is Independence Day, so our meeting has been moved to Wednesday the 5th. And on that note, I wish everybody a happy and safe Independence Day holiday. Hope you enjoy time with your family and friends. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Motion to, and second to adjourn, all those who favor, say an aye. All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Good evening, everyone.